Welcome to tonight's November 10th, 2025 work session of the Unionville Chad's Board, School Board. I call tonight's meeting to order. I have an announcement that the Board met tonight in executive session to discuss topics not appropriate for a public meeting. These topics included potential personnel stipends and facilities and an STS contract addendum. We also discussed two student release and settlement agreements and updates on personnel topics, including a legal update on a potential case regarding a contract contractor, staffing update, a labor contract update, state budget update, and an update on an accident negligence claim. Dr. Hoffman, I pass it to you for the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Barata and everyone. I don't have, we'll have a much more robust superintendent's report next week, but I did want to take an opportunity to share a few things. I actually want to tell you a story, actually. It's kind of like story time, real quick. But I wanted to be able to share some things that had happened recently and then over the course of the year that I really think are just extraordinary and it really highlight our community and what we're about and what we and as we think about our, our culture moving forward. So I'm going to tell you a story about Saturday. So Saturday, Joe Vogler, Pat Clark, Sean McWilliams, who is our band director, Amanda Panati, our marching band parents and students, our field hockey parents and players, and US bands, all collaborated to make something happen very special. So this group of people worked hard to collaborate and advocate through a very difficult situation and evolved a key contributor to both the band competition on Saturday and the field hockey match against Kennett on Saturday. So we had an individual who was a major part of both competitions and they were scheduled to go off at a time. One was at MetLife Stadium in New York and the other was in Coatsville. So our administrative teams and band director worked to get US bands to move the Unionville up to the first slot at 11:00 AM. They were scheduled, originally scheduled to be on at 12:40. So huge kudos to the US bands for accommodating this ask and huge kudos to the band parents and students that had to move their personal timelines to accommodate the earlier start at MetLife Stadium in New York. They did so without complaint. Lesser known, but just as important to mention is the order in which you go at the band competition is dictated by your seeding. So the later in the competition you go, the higher your seed. So we were, we were a higher seed. And so in the eyes of the judges, the judges know the first bands are the ones that are typically the lower seeds. And then as the, as the competition goes on, the higher seeds go. So there is, there is a gravitas and a, and a, it's good to go later in the, in the competition. So I think it's really important to highlight the fact that our band, that US bands is willing to move us with all the bands that are there at MetLife Stadium, that our band and our folks were okay with the idea that they would move their slot, which again is determined by seeding, to go first. So that we had one individual that could be in that competition and make it back for the field hockey game. So how did this all play out? So the parents of the student met, drove to MetLife Stadium, watched the performance, picked their student up, went straight from the competition to the field at Coatsville with their, with their child. The field hockey team pulled off one of their biggest upsets of the year against crosstown rival Kennett and advanced to the state semifinals. I think one of the most important factors here is this individual and key contributor is the goalie. So as you know, without a goalie, it's going to be pretty hard. So in summary, the collective UCFSD family worked together to make all this possible for our students. I think the parents of the students most impacted summed it up, the parent of this particular student who was impacted best summed it up when they posted this. None of this would have been possible without the amazing support and encouragement and teamwork of UCFSD teachers and administrators. They got US bands to move Unionville's performance up so my child could do both activities and they were incredibly supportive of them emotionally as we weren't sure we could do both. I'm a huge advocate for UCFSD. I think it's a great district with some of the most exceptional people you could encounter. They really hit it out of the park with this one to help my child, the marching band, and the field hockey team. And I'd argue the parents and the students were just as big a part of this win as the teachers and the admin. It was, it was a true example of what, what you might call one Unionville isn't, is at full effect, right? So that's just one story I wanted to tell about a lot of people doing a lot of things to make a lot of great things happen for our kids and it wasn't easy. I also want to take a moment to celebrate my team. This group has been leading with modesty and humility and making a huge impact. Our people-centered culture can be felt through their actions. Just some examples is that we've had some administrative coverage over the past two weeks at UE. Mike, Amy, Kendall, Rachel, Audrey, the UE teachers and support staff have all chipped in to make it work. Not one person has ever come to me to let me know how busy they are or what's going on. They just take care of business and the teachers have felt the support. We've gotten multiple emails from teachers and support staff there about how well they feel supported. The charity that I've seen, CACs in our food drive, our administrative cabinet and district office staff. There's even a candy sale in the break room there, which I don't know who that is, but somebody's raising money and selling candy for CACs and I love it. So again, so it's just organically, people are really chipping in. A lot of culture building is happening. Amy, Nikki, Kyler, James, and the custodial team have done so much to promote all of our kids and what's going on in the district. Amy has been a huge culture builder here at district office. I don't know if it still smells like hot dogs in the break room, but we had a hot dog roller today. Justin was, was stocking the, the hot dogs there. Amy has a way and Justin lately have had a great way of providing great opportunities for our district staff, but also doing some professional learning. We had baked potato bar and professional development not long ago. And the key to this is I do want to stress, all of this is done at the expense of the administrative team. None of this is from any taxpayer dollars paying for these types of things. This is from the goodness of people's heart. From decorations, celebrations, the clubs and activities piece that I mentioned with the story, food services. You know, Joe and Devin, and then the call to action to our community and our parents. And man, did our parents step up, filled our positions, shared our plea on Facebook. We got so many applications from, from that ask from our community. It's, it's amazing. It just highlights, I guess what I want to do, I just want to highlight that we are really great together when we work together and when we're all a part of something together. And it's just showing up day after day, whether it's with the administrative team here, in our schools, in our community. And these are the stories that we don't often get to hear about, right? You know, like it's not everybody, the community doesn't know, the board doesn't always know the things that happen on the daily. And I wanted you guys to be aware of that because this is a special place because we are a people-centered culture, one of our district values. And our people are living it every day and I just wanted you to know that. And with that, I will kick it back to you, Dr. Barata.
Those are great stories and thanks for not telling me them earlier. I like sharing with everybody. And I like one Unionville. I like that. I like that. All right. Thank you, Dr. Hoffman. Now's the time for community comments. If anyone in our community would like to make public comment. All right, moving on to school director comments, beginning with Ms. Anderson.
Just to say, Dr. Hoffman, thank you for this story and I'm not going to say anything tonight. I, this is my last month and I will say something at our last meeting, but that, your story and the one Unionville really just got me here because as I think I've been thinking about my time here too. So thank you for sharing that.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman, Dr. Hoffman. It, I think the compassion comes from the leadership and I think the fact that you're able to share these stories in a way that you do makes people want to do even more of that. So thank you for highlighting.
Yeah, I think, Dr. Hoffman, we're all appreciative of hearing wonderful stories like that and kudos to all who were involved in making the Saturday experience is so complete for all those involved.
I just want to add the person at the, the new person at the helm of all of this, leading with the head and the heart is you, Dr. Hoffman. So I'll look at you while I say it starts with, starts with someone and everyone sees it through, but your comments tonight were right on. And an extra shout out for the volleyball team who also made it to the next round in state finals. So both volleyball and field hockey will be playing tomorrow night. I wish them all good luck.
I just want, oh, sorry, no, that's not my turn.
I guess you can go whenever you want.
I, I'm kind of glad you did that because I feel like I'm like holding back the tears and looking at you. I mean, that was literally, I had heard kind of some rumblings about that story, but to know that it was the goalie, just to hear all those things. I just think, and I will say this again for next week, but to be a part of this district is so amazing. I'm so proud to be a part of this district as a parent, as a board member, as a substitute teacher, as silly as that is, just to be a part of all the culture that exists. And these aren't just stories. This is what it's like. I mean, this is not, you know, just some trumped up, let's tell a great story, rah rah. This is the day in and day out and little things about, you were saying about Amy and the hot dogs and this goes on in the schools and this goes on throughout all the buildings and it's so inspiring to see it and to feel it. And I feel so lucky to have had this experience and to have seen it from the inside out because it does start from the top and you are setting an exceptional example. And it's felt from top down, you know, all the way down to every staff member within this district. So thank you for that. Thank you for sharing this and I will burn tissues next week. Thank you.
And I thank you also for sharing, Dr. Hoffman, and I don't have any other comments.
Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Dr. First, I'd like to extend my, my, my thanks to, to all of our veterans in, in the district and wish them a happy Veterans Day tomorrow, including our own, our own Captain Hellrun. And also like to congratulate, it's been a busy few weeks for, for Unionville Athletics to both the field hockey and volleyball teams who are both playing in the state semifinals tomorrow. And I think we've not celebrated the boys golf team state championship. It's been, been a few weeks since, since we last met. So congratulations to, to all those and as well as all of our other teams who, who made it to playoffs and, and played, played well, but, but did not, did not advance to, to this point.
I also want to congratulate Dr. Simonson on his apparent win. We'll see. It hasn't been certified yet, right? But I want to say it's, it is by far the largest win. So I feel good about the certification. Okay, moving on to routine business. Routine business will be discussed and voted on at next week's regular board meeting. Next up is curriculum, instruction, and technology with Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Dr. Barata. Earlier this afternoon evening, we met for the November curriculum, instruction, and technology meeting. It was a packed agenda and we had a room full of exceptional educators from our district that spoke about different things. We will have some voting items and I'm going to invite Dr. Jenkins up to give the curriculum report.
Hi, good evening. So this month we have five agenda voting items under curriculum and instruction and technology committee. So we have the middle school PE courses. So our middle school is currently working on adding some choice into their programs. So we have some courses that they're looking to add such as recreational games and movement advanced PE. We are working on that name and it will have a new name next week. And then some of the courses, they were just looking to do a revision from that piece. And then we're moving on to business and computer apps. So business and computer apps is looking to add, say, three courses and really do a revision on one. So it'll be two AP courses, cooperative ed course, and personal finance will be getting a slight rewrite to make sure that we hit all the requirements for the graduation requirement for the class of 2027. I'm sorry, not for the class 27, for the requirement going into place in 2027. The next up are the music courses. So we currently have a history of rock course that we're looking to add and then combining music theory one and two as we go into AP music theory course. And we're going to eliminate the course fundamentals of music. And then also the high school health and PE courses are there also in the curriculum cycle and they're looking to add some additional courses. It really takes some components to look at what can we do to really meet the needs of our students. So when I look at all of these courses from middle school to high school, it's really about the needs of our students and what are we doing to meet the needs of our students and taking our courses and revising them and looking at them and saying, let's add this, let's add an AP cybersecurity because of the field that it's in and how it's going to be now in the world that we live in and what can we do to meet our students there. And then the last agenda voting item that I have is the AP English novels that we had out and we presented on them last month and they were for a one-month review. And that will be the five agenda voting items. And now I want to turn it over to Mr. Clark, who's going to talk and present on college and career readiness. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. We had a very busy curriculum meeting, so I have the opportunity to, this evening, talk a little bit more about the work we're doing with the College and Career Initiative. Last week was a pretty broad overview, last week, I'm sorry, last month was a broader overview of, of the thought behind college and career. And this one is a little more in-depth. There we go. So first, our committee, our committee is stacked, as I said in the meeting. We have, we have so many people with so many great experiences. We've got school board reps, district office, UHS admin, Nick Allen is involved at the middle school as there's probably down the line a continuum to this, a pretty big high school group, and everybody's got different talents. We have counselors, Annie Davis, the new college and career counselor, but Bethany Clemson does transition work with our students who receive special ed services and Sue Montes is our gifted support teacher and Noel Porco runs senior project and Dr. Fendora and Pat Sheehan have dual enrollment experience from previous districts. You heard from Jack Starkey earlier tonight who's working on a lot of the business courses. So we've really tried to be comprehensive. We have student representatives from each grade. We have three parent reps and our next step is to identify some alumni and bring them along with us into our, into our journey for college and career. So I think the first piece is, is understanding our community and and where we're at already. So this is the preliminary 2025 data. If you're familiar with the school profile, that's typically done at the end of October, that's not quite ready yet, but class of 2025, we're 93% attended college, 88 at 4% and 5% of two-year college, and then 7% in the other opportunities category. So this is, it, I, I think what we really have landed on is where are we and, and how do we start this and where are we at when we start, right? This is a topic where if anybody in this room engages in conversation, we could go 100 miles an hour in 20 different directions and all of them would be good. So what is our current state of programming? Like what do we already have in place? How can we maximize what we have in place? And how does, does everyone understand what's happening? And this was a really interesting point brought up. Kim Lauder, who supports Annie Davis, she said, you know, understanding is a worthwhile goal. We, we have 100 plus faculty members and, and we're not so sure that everybody really understands what everyone's doing, not because we're not colleagues and, and share information, but because it is such a big place and there is so much going on. And so this is where I think we are beginning. This was a slide I shared last month about three potential paths. What are, what are the school programming ideas that we can look at? What about dual enrollment? How can we give kids access to high level work in high school? And then what exploration opportunities can we give to our students, right? How can we facilitate experiences to help students figure out what they may want to pursue? As Dr. Hoffman points out, it's, it's a major decision in a lot of ways when kids decide what they may want to pursue regardless of school, career, trade school. How can we help students to have some real world understanding of that before they make a pretty substantial time and honestly financial commitment? So how are we already meeting student needs? If you take a look at this list, it's pretty comprehensive from our TCHS programming to the, the multitude of things that are done in the counseling center, our current college and career website where if you haven't taken a look, Annie Davis has given it a, an upgrade in the last year and it really is so comprehensive. Freshman seminar, sophomore seminars new this year, junior planning conferences, senior seminars, personal statements with students, Navviance, co-op education with Mr. Starkey talked about earlier that we hope will be approved in 2627. The state require a college and career readiness artifacts. How can we, how can we leverage those and make those meaningful? And then finally, we are also offering industry certifications, so CPR and AED certifications available. Robin Daly offers food handler certifications through the FCS courses. Currently with dual enrollment, dual enrollment is tricky. Given our geography, logistics can be, can be tough with dual enrollment courses. So we have project lead the way, the honors engineering courses where students can get credit through Rochester Institute of Technology. We have a dual enrollment agreement with Westchester and Westchester offers various formats, but if one of the dual enrollment courses were offered in person, our student would need three class periods to do that. So you're going to need a period for travel, a period for the class and a period to return to Unionville, right? So that, that's really a logistical challenge. And honestly, sometimes the dual enrollments have a high level of interest for students and sometimes they don't. In 2425, we had five students take advantage of the opportunity. Right now, this fall, we don't have anyone enrolled. It just wasn't, it didn't, it didn't click with any of our students. So this is an area where further exploration is warranted. There are a lot of local districts that have found some engaging ways to offer college level work and, and we've had some initial conversations and I think that we'll be heading back to, to some of those places along with some other local universities to see what options we can provide for our students. So outside experiences, this I think our, our committee believes is a growth area. We have some frameworks that we can maximize and there are new opportunities to explore. So for example, how do we maybe leverage PSAT day? I don't know if you're familiar, the testers come into school and there is some programming that happens, but it, it can be a challenging afternoon after PSAT testing for kids who have tested and for kids who may come in late. So, so how might we use that PSAT day for students who aren't testing in 11th and 12th grade, maybe to do some exploration? How can we expand our senior project to include some real world experiences? How can we create an alumni network? We, we've got an incredible alumni network and how can we leverage them? One of the young men who was at the group meeting is interested in being a pilot and, and flying in the military. Well, we certainly have some connections about people who could talk about flying in the military. I mean, there's someone in this room. There's an alumni, Alan Nash, who's flying the F-35 for the Marine Corps right now. So, so how do we leverage our alumni? Mary Beth Lyles has done a great job as part of the sincerely seniors event. She gathers outside emails and asks students if we can contact them in the future. So we've already got something built. How can we engage business and community partners for things like shadow days and externships? How could we look at internships? An example of that might be looking at what Mr. Webb presented earlier, I think it was, was it August? He's got a summer tech intern program, right? Well, how can we expand that? Some, Kennett has a, has a program called Future Ready where students take maybe two courses in a subject area. Maybe it's the technology courses and that gives them access to an internship. We could expand the, the tech interns in the summer to an elective course in the fall, right? So we do have some things in place, but this is definitely a growth area for us. These are some areas of strength and you all have copies of this. So we had a large group meeting on October 22nd. We had some great conversation. And so just to, to support the idea that we are already doing a lot for our students, we took each of the five roundtable discussions, used Gemini. It's a great synthesis tool. And what Gemini came back with was this, our counseling support's outstanding, our teacher interaction guidance and support is great. We have a number of diverse course offerings for students. We have a very strong college-going culture and preparedness for college. We've got planning conferences and seminars at every grade level and exposure to opportunities. We have college visits. We have professional speakers. We have career fairs. And Annie Davis is working really hard on connecting with post-secondary communities. So some areas for growth, dual enrollment opportunities. How, how can we get, expand our opportunities for students and look at some of the logistical challenges we have? Those real world vocational experiences, establishing our alumni network. The next two, navigating the process and expanding college visit options. There is a lot of that happening and, and a byproduct of our conversation was about communication. How do you share effectively what's going on with students? They receive so many messages and it, it may be that, is there a better way to let our students know exactly what's happening? And then finally, understanding the admissions process. I left this slide as a separate slide because I think it's really important. We do this all of the time, but I don't know that, I'll be honest, at first I wasn't really intentional about this piece, right? How do we keep the student at the center? This, regardless of all the things we're doing, this is, this can be a really stressful time for young people, right? How, how can we best support the person as they're going through this process? So one of the themes that came out was about challenging perceptions and misconceptions. This talk about I have to get into a good college, right? So how can we get to the right college? We will always have our students who are highly motivated and look to, you know, maximize their APs and go to competitive schools and, and, and there's, that's right for some kids, but for some kids, that's not right. So how can we shift the conversation to what's the right school or what's the right path for all of our students? And then the other theme that came out of it was a competitive culture and that, you know, there's a lot of focus on kids as early as eighth grade and maybe even sooner with what grades I have to get and what courses I have to take. And so how can we help our students realize that everybody is on a path that we will help them to meet, right? And everybody's got different talents and different strengths. So where do we go next? So we'll continue to meet as a small teacher group and large groups. We'll explore best practices. We'll listen to our stakeholders. We thought student focus groups would be really effective, right? Surveys can be challenging. Everybody gets a survey every so often in their email, but how do we build student focus groups and get feedback that way? We'll can, we'll do some adult group surveys and continue to communicate regularly with everyone. The high school staff needs to be informed. Community needs to be informed. We'll have regular updates with the board. And what would a successful year one look like? Some attainable goals. Gather feedback, understand and maximize our offerings, explore dual enrollment, establish some community and business partnerships, create pathways to leverage our alumni network, and then look to implement reasonable adjustments and improvements to the student experience for 2026. And then in the spring, develop a systematic, comprehensive plan that we would share a multi-year plan with the board. Again, we have a review cycle. I mentioned this last month that will be very deliberate about things, changes we have to make that would require changes we have to make that would require resources. And that brings me to the end of the college and career update. Questions?
Couple things. The alumni network. That setting up an alumni network for the Naval Academy was my class's gift. You know, major gift to the academy, and that's been set up, and it's been very successful. It's bigger, I'm sure, than what we would have. But I think I could find someone to, that we could consult with if there's an interest in that, who's been through that, could point out some pitfalls or give some guidance. Second thing, just came up this morning, actually, at our IU Leadership Meeting. Something I never thought about in this area, and I haven't seen presented. And that is something that can greatly retard our efforts that is completely under our control and changeable by us should we choose to do so. And that is our graduation requirements. So when looking at dual enrollment, internships, co-op opportunities can be completely blocked by our graduation requirements. And so, in other words, it might be impossible to do those things and get all the courses you need to graduate. So the suggestion is, or the solution that is proposed is to go to the statutory graduation requirements. Don't tack on anything beyond what Pennsylvania requires. Doesn't mean we can't recommend things, offer things, you know? Maybe it doesn't change our offerings at all, but the fact that there is a trade-off is something we should recognize and weigh and something to consider. Should we change our graduation requirements to the statutory requirements in order to open up these opportunities, which otherwise might be blocked?
Jeff, I think that's an outstanding point. Because you look at that in a number of ways. I remember when we started planning and implementing blended courses. And a part of that was our mission, right? And our portrait of a graduate, when you think about it, having a course that doesn't meet every day, right? But you have work to do in between. Maybe it meets every other day, very much like a college course might. And at the time, I remember thinking to myself, you know, I wonder what that would be like if it was a graduation requirement? Because for a student to take a blended course as a part of their programming here. So in essence, what do we feel like are the most important things that our kids need? And then make sure that our kids have exposure to the most important things. So that just maybe reminded me of that thought. So I appreciate you sharing that.
I apologize again, I missed the first meeting. October was just a difficult month for me, I missed quite a few. But this is really exciting. You've pretty much covered everything I could have thought of.
Our team is stacked, Dr. K. I said that before.
I really like the idea of alumni. And, you know, as our kids have graduated and what's their experience the year one? And can we like learn from them? It's just a very powerful tool.
It's really interesting, longitudinal data, right? Other districts talk about that. What is the year one success rate? What is the success rate of students after six years, for example? How many students have completed their first degree, right? And what can we learn from that group of students? So there are lots of paths we can take, and that's why I started this with like, let's be measured and let's be systematic. And, you know, but I would agree with you 100% that there are definitely things that we should look at with our students who have graduated.
And I think the other piece that I learned with my daughter was, you know, college applications happen in August, September, that, you know, start of the senior year. This course that was with TCHS that she did with Allied Health, she changed her mind by the end of the year because she really loved that. And so I was like, okay, wait, this timing doesn't work, you know? And so, you know, just kind of pulling it up a little bit. Like, I know we have a career, we have definitely something in the end of middle school that we introduce kids to, but just waiting till the senior year may not be the right thing because kids are starting to think. And then they're still very, still figuring it out. Even when they go to college, they're still figuring it out, but it's earlier we can introduce it.
I would say one of the things Annie Davis has done this year, she started a career speaker series this year, where she's bringing in a different person every month to talk about their career path. So I think she's aware of that definitely. And but I would agree with you too, that while senior year looks great for some of our students, it's actually leading the process.
Right, right. Well, thank you. It's a great job.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. And thank you for the energy that you bring to this. It makes all the difference. Thank you. Before I turn it back over, I just want to add one concluding comment, since I will have fleeting opportunities to make comment. And again, it kind of ties back to what Dr. Hoffman said in his, was sharing his story. Earlier today in Curriculum Instruction Technology, we had a host of excellent educators come and talk about different projects and, not projects, different course changes, new courses, things like that. And some of my colleagues who are here got to feel that energy. And it was pointed out then by Dr. Hoffman, again, and I commented then that we don't always realize we're like the fish in the water. We don't realize what we have here. And I say we, but the whole community. I don't think we realize how exceptional we are with our educators here. And how the values that they put forward in the way they think about and develop ways to meet our students' needs on an ever-expanding basis, really, they are the role models for Portrait of a Graduate. I mean, I have been on this board for 10 years witnessing this. Five years prior, I was on curriculum council. So I've had 15 years of seeing our educators come in and share their passion, like Mr. Clark has just done. Show critical thinking and flexibility as times are changing. A growth mindset, create tremendous creativity and collaboration amongst their teams. You just said you got a stacked team, right? We see this all the time. And beyond everything, the work ethic, the work ethic going, and you pointed this out earlier. But these are not things that they have to do. Things are confined. They just can keep on doing what they're doing, but they don't. They keep bringing more growth for the students. And I just, again, I don't have any more opportunities to speak in this forum. So I just want to really say that again, sorry for those who heard me say this earlier. It's just fantastic to be in this district, and I'm just grateful. So that's all. Back to you, Dr. Broda.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Moving on to policy with Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Dr. Broda. This month, we will have four policies up for approval, as well as a slew of policies at both second reading and first reading. So at this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Hoffman to give the policy report.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. And I promise to give just as much energy and enthusiasm to policy as everyone's given to curriculum. So I'm glad I got a laugh. Anyway, there are several policies for approval, as Mr. Allen noted. Those being under 5.1, which is our 105 curriculum. There are no changes since second reading. Also in 5.2, that is policy 209.2 Diabetes Management. Also no changes since second reading. And then thirdly, we have policy 217, graduation up for approval. Also no changes since the last meeting. So there's a theme for the first few here that we've been through our paces, and I think we're ready to move those forward unless there's any questions on policies for approval. Okay, seeing none, I'll move on to policy. This is 918, the Title I Parent and Family Engagement Policy. So every year, just as background, we do meet with our students and parents of students that are in our Title I Reading Support Program. We talk about our parent engagement policy and engagement policy. And then we bring forward any possible changes to that policy after we have that meeting. It is a requirement of having Title I dollars that come to our district that we have this annual renewal of our parent and family engagement policy. So typically, what happens, if there are some changes, we would bring the language forward for changes. If there are no changes, we bring it forward for approval so we can have a new annual date put on the policy as we move forward. So I don't know if there's any questions on this review approval of our Title I policy. Okay, seeing none, then, we're moving on to policies for second reading. A majority of these policies, as we discussed previously, are related to policies 103, 104, 247, 249, which are policies that govern our discrimination, non-discrimination and harassment in employment practices, hazing, and bullying and cyberbullying. So the majority of these changes were related to putting these policies under one reporting form so that it makes it more streamlined for anyone who wants to make a file a complaint. They have a better understanding of the processes, and it also helps streamline the process for our administration. So from the last meeting, there was a little bit of feedback that I'll share, Policy 247 AG2. It was updated to mirror language in Policy 249 AG2. So they are policies that are similar and just connecting the wording to make it consistent. And also correcting page numbering that needed to be done. Also, Policy 249 AG2, correcting the page numbering. And the previous change to that was including the Title IX regs and changes to that as well. Also notably, gifts policy has been moved back to the second reading here. And we wanted to make sure that if there's any further discussion on gifts, that we were able to have that before moving it forward next month or next meeting for approval. So with that, with anything here under second reading, any questions, comments, or concerns from the board?
Dr. Hoffman, thank you for covering those for 322, the gifts policy, which we moved back to, you know, first reading last month. As far as I'm aware, I do not recall having seen any suggestions to updating language since last month's work session. Does, we did have some discussion about this policy. Does anyone have suggestions or any conversational points to modify the existing language?
Jody?
Yes?
Just, does one of us need to write something and send it in for what we think should be added? Is that what you're?
Well, I'm saying either that or we had some discussion last month about it, but there was no, there was no kind of definitive ask in terms of what the suggestions were for changes in language. So I'd say we either have that discussion now, or if individuals have suggestions or thoughts, they can email them to, they can send them to Mrs. Miller in order, and then we can have that for a discussion as a reminder at the next meeting. As a reminder, next month, December, we just have the reorganization meeting. So this policy will not, policies at second reading now will not be up for, you know, final reading and approval until the January, until the January board meeting. So we effectively have two months to make edits on these policies.
I didn't really look at it in preparation for this meeting, but it is something that I will try to look at in the next couple of weeks. And if I have some suggestions, I will send them along. That's Dr. Broda speaking.
Yeah, I can see. Thank you, Dr. Broda. One suggestion that I would throw out for the group is that, as we discussed a month ago, there's some incongruity between saying that there's, you know, that our employees cannot accept any type of gifts from parents. Yet we know that this is something which is, the policy as it stands is basically violated on a regular basis. Most of them being de minimis gifts. So I would suggest that we could, similar to policy 827, which we approved changes to last month, which is conflict of interest. There is, within that policy, there is a specific mention of excluding, the term does not include an action having a de minimis economic impact. So we could look at adding some type of similar language into 322. Now legally, in terms of the IRS, there's, you know, there is a specific definition of de minimis impact of being a gift not in cash of less than $100 worth of value. So we could, we decide how prescriptive we want to be if we are going to make a change to this policy.
Jody, this is Erin. I agree with you. That's what's missing. That's what I suggested last month, with just an acknowledgement, very simple, that we have mirrored in other language, not to complicate the policy, but just an acknowledgement that people aren't in violation if they accept the mug.
Okay, so I'll put some proposed language to Mrs. Miller. And then please, everyone else, if you have thoughts, please send them to me and Mrs. Miller, Dr. Hoffman. And then we'll have some suggested revised language for our January work session to have the discussion prior to the final vote on that at the January board meeting. Does that work for everyone? Great. Good, Dr. Hoffman, thank you for, I'll let you continue through with item 5.6.
Okay, and so we are at policies for first reading. So we obviously have some time to review these, but I wanted to just highlight a few things for you. First and foremost, there are a couple of new policies and AGs here recommended that we, and we do recommend moving them forward. So this is conduct and disciplinary procedures as it relates to educators, educator misconduct policy, 317.1, and associated guidelines to 317. So take a look at those and get back to us with any thoughts or changes. We have had our solicitor review these so that he is comfortable with what we have that we're putting forward here for first reading. We also put it through our team and have reviewed these policies as well and feel like they're policies we'd like to adopt. Generally, with these types of policies, what you see, the policy very much mirrors school code. So a lot of what you see in the policy is taken directly from what it is that we're supposed to be doing as a district. So it's not something that's, for us, as far as procedure, would be very earth-shattering. So then we have personal necessity leave here, which has really been updated to reflect accommodations under the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act. Records retention schedule, I do want to note here in this first reading, there is an edit that needs to be made to this. And that is under surveys. There is a section that talks about employees, our surveys and our folks versus guest speakers and employees, that we should be flipping the years that are listed. One, for our external surveys and speakers, it's listed as we'll keep that record for one year. That should read five years. And for our internal folks, it should read one year. So right now, it's transposed. We just need to flip those numbers. I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that change. We'll make that change when we put it forward, and so that's corrected copy for next week.
Sorry, Dr. Hoffman, can I just go back to the 317 series for a quick second?
Sure.
Thank you. So I would just like to point out for my colleagues that in 317 Administrative Guideline 1, that for the arrest or conviction report, currently, the link to that report, which is PDE 6004, that currently, that link is not currently functioning, but we will have, we do have the correct link that links through to that form. And that will be corrected for January. And then, Dr. Hoffman, I just had a question in terms of 317 Administrative Guideline 0. And overall, I think all the changes to the 317 series make a lot of sense. I like that it decouples kind of the disciplinary procedures into the new Administrative Guideline 0, whereas currently, that's all part of a giant policy, our existing policy 317. So I like that, I think all the new, the three new administrative So I like that. I I think all the new, the three new administrative guidelines for us all will all will work very well. My one question is with an administrative guideline zero and steps one and two, which are the verbal warnings and which involve the the verbal discipline, currently, they both suggest that a record of a conversation be kept. However, it's it does not specify where that's kept, whereas once you get to steps three and four with with written warnings, those are clearly indicated to to go into the employee's file. So I get my question is just where where do those, you know, where does records of those step one, step two verbal conversations occur? And then, when an employee leaves the district for for any reason, what what's then the disposition of that of the record of those conversations if it's not being included in their in their employee file?
No, that's great, Mr. Allen. We could clarify that, but just for just for informational purposes, so people have a general sense. There are times when there may be a disciplinary action where there's a summary of a meeting that that occurred that may not rise to what we might call a a verbal reprimand. And so a lot of times there are meetings that are summarized. And there are times when we initiate formal discipline where it may be a verbal warning that is then also memorialized in writing. And then that progresses, obviously, to then what we call a written reprimand. And it progresses through through the policy. But to your point about, you know, where does specifying where those types of information reside, because there there aren't things that would typically go right away into the the file, the personnel file of an employee. It may be a summary email between the the employee and their supervisor. So we can clarify that information. So it's a little more clear to everybody what happens when there's a record of that. So thank you for for sharing your concern there.
Thank you.
We are not suggesting that every little verbal warning has to be, okay, thank you. That would not be fair.
Right, only if we were in a formal process would that get into there. Yep. Okay, last two here, policy eight one nine, suicide awareness, prevention and response. We have been, this is something we've been working on for a significant period of time. So we're putting it forward now for for first reading. This is something that I do want to draw your attention to because I would like the board to look at this carefully and provide us some feedback here in this. Because this has taken us some time to bring forward because it's it's an area that we want to make sure that we get right when it comes to policy and that we're providing the supports that our that our folks need. And so it's it's a significant policy and it's taken us some time to bring forward. So if I could ask the same of of our crew when we're looking at this particular policy for first reading to to really dive in and give us some good feedback on that one. And then finally, you know, kind of rounding out the the theme, I think, of some of the changes that we're making here in eight twenty four, maintaining professional adult and student boundaries. We need to reflect and update our title one policies, policy to to be reflected there and the title one coordinator be a part of that particular policy. So that is the person as the policy update for tonight. Mr. Allen, if there's any questions you have or the board regarding anything for the policy agenda tonight, then I am all ears.
Does anyone else have any thoughts or questions regarding the policies we've discussed so far? Right, seeing none, back to you, Dr. Brata. Thank you, Dr. Hoffman.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. I thought you brought de maximus energy to that policy discussion. I was trying to look up with the antonym to de minimis, but there there really isn't one. All right, moving on to facilities with Dr. Key.
You got me laughing. I forgot. I'd like to invite Mr. Weitzel. We only have one item today.
Thank you, Dr. King. Good evening all. This month is is pretty light, just one voting item on the agenda. I'll review this item first, and then I'll also provide the board an update on some upcoming agenda items for the start of the new calendar year. So agenda item one is a cost proposal for the replacement of the existing fifteen year old Unionville High School stadium safety netting. This is the system that is between the field and the track, and its primary purpose is so that we can safely utilize the field and the track at the same time. The existing net netting is becoming frayed and brittle and starting to break down. This proposal is just to replace the netting and then the top and bottom cables and the attachment hardware. We will continue to utilize the existing poles and the anchor sleeves. The total cost of the proposal is sixteen thousand one eighty two from AAE Company per the state coastars contract pricing, and will be funded by the long range facilities plan. Does anyone have any questions? Very good. So looking ahead, we have three projects out to bid right now with the goal of receiving bids in in December in order to bring them forward in January for approval. Those projects include the rebidding of the exterior learning spaces at both Chad's Ford and UE, the Unionville High School rooftop solar project, which, as you remember, is being partially funded with grants and direct pay tax credits, and the Unionville Elementary School HVAC renovation project, which we approved the design contract for last month. Along with those three projects, we also have a presentation of the schematic design for a possible new middle school. We've been working with Breslin Architects since this past summer on what the building and the site might look like. We'll be providing updated renderings, floor plans, site plans, along with an updated product, project budget, project schedule and financial plan. So January is certainly going to be a busy, a busy month. Unless there are any questions, Doc, Dr. King, I'll turn it back to you.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Mr. Weitzel for, I think it's been a lot of work for the middle school. I think we are, even I have started to come join the middle school bi weekly meetings and they I thought I could do it on Zoom, but then they would bring up these big pictures and walk around the tables and it's been extremely interactive. And I think Breslin has done a really good job listening to us and making sure that it's going to meet all the needs. I feel like it's a really thorough thorough team meeting, and I really appreciate all the work that you have put in in managing all of this, Mr. Weitzel. Okay, that's all for facilities, Dr. Brata.
Thank you, Dr. Key. Moving on to personnel with Dr. Simonson.
Thanks, Dr. Brata. At the beginning of this meeting, Dr. Brata disclosed the discussions that occurred in executive session prior to tonight's meeting. Those discussions covered the key elements of the personnel agenda, and I don't think we have any updates for work session discussion right now. So unless Mr. Odevar or my colleagues have other personnel topics to discuss tonight, we'll vote on this agenda next week, and that completes personnel for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Simonson. Moving on to communications with Ms. Loomis.
Thank you, Dr. Verata, for that robust introduction. I would like to invite Ms. Leroya to come up and provide this month's communications report. I'm sure it will be robust as well. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I will present three informational items to you, along with a brief update on some of our other goal work. So if we can actually go back to the agenda first, I'll I'll present some information on our informational items, and then we'll jump into this presentation. So as you know, the the first item that we'll cover tonight is the final site contract. So as you know, UCFSD has committed to redeveloping its website for improved alignment with our district values, for enhanced user experience, especially when it comes to compliance with federal digital accessibility standards. We have a hosting contract with Final Site through 2028, so we will partner with them on a select custom design at a one time cost of twenty two thousand five hundred and twenty five dollars. This includes a fifteen percent discount. Design services will include design development, implementation, technical review, and then launch support as well. Our steering committee did look at three final site design options, and we selected the one that we thought was the best fit for us. So thank you to the members of the team, including those that are at the table tonight, who are a part of that work. And this cost is being supported from the Communications and Community Relations Department's budget. We anticipate the website being ready in time for the 2026 to 27 school year. And this information, of course, is being shared with you as an informational item tonight, but will be a voting item next week. So we just wanted you to have access to that information. Next up are the all important school year calendars. So a little bit of context. As you know, we customarily present our final calendar for the next school year to the board and to the public as early as possible for our planning purposes. Last year, we also began to present two additional years of calendars. We will ask for you to vote on the 2026 to 27 calendar in January. So you do have two months lead time for January. And then we are presenting the 2027 to 28 and 2028 to 29 calendars as draft items, and they will remain draft items until fall of 26 and 27, respectively. Our calendars are always developed in accordance with policy eight oh three, AG zero zero, and include one hundred and eighty two instructional days for students and one hundred and ninety working days for staff. So if we jump right into 26 and 27, I won't bore you with all of the details here, but I do want to point out a few things of note. Many of the holidays that we traditionally observe as in service days happen to fall on a weekend in 2026 to 27. So because of that, after we build the standard calendar based off the AG, we still needed to add one additional in-service day for professional staff. And the the calendar committee settled on Monday, August 24th. So what that will mean is that professional staff will report one day earlier than normal. We did, we we consulted a number of options. We can talk about those, but this option gave our district and school leadership additional professional development time at a time of the year that it has been been historically needed. So we feel that we're fulfilling a need here. And is the only date that wouldn't extend the school year for staff and students in June. So we thought we would try to preserve that that June end date if we could. I do think it's important for everyone to know that the Chester County Intermediate Unit currently plans to end, I'm sorry, to begin their school year on Monday, August 24th. While I know that our county tries very hard to coordinate a start date, it looks like this year there is no consensus on start date. So we have done our our digging to make sure that that any implications will be minimal. And so students who attend CCIU programs, in particular TCHS, and our special education students will follow that calendar. So if you have questions about that, happy to answer those, but we've been doing some digging. Special thanks to Mr. Dady, to to Ms. Loomis and the special ed team, who've been helping us just understand and make sure that we're landing in exactly the right place for our start date next year. So that's 2026 to 27. Twenty twenty seven to 28, again, we're going to jump into two draft calendars. It's important, I think, to know that standard in-service days. I'll let you pull that up real quick. So we have a couple of weird things that happen in 2027 to 28 based off of the AG. Two standard in-service days will take place on Friday, October 29th, and then again on Tuesday, November 2nd. So what that looks like is students are out Friday, and then they're out Tuesday. We know that's not ideal for us to bring students back just for a Monday. We did look at a number of options, and we'll talk about those in a second to to reduce the the strain here, but ultimately ended up leaving leaving that for now. In addition, we have a standard winter break that would be observed from Friday, December 24th to Friday, January 31st. The new year being observed on Friday, January 31st, technically, since it falls on that Saturday. So this does result in an unusually short winter break, and we know that, we we recognize that. We did consider, the calendar committee did consider the option of shortening spring break so that we could allow for a fall break around those two in-service days between October to November, and to allow us to have a slightly longer winter break. We wanted to make sure that the calendar committee could could fully consider this option. I appreciated the innovativeness of this option, but ultimately, we decided that our community in the past has really been split about the full week of spring break, and we thought that our community would really still appreciate that. So at this time, we are keeping that Friday and Tuesday of in-service, and we're keeping the the standard winter break, knowing that we run on a cycle and that a short winter break means a long winter break is ultimately coming. So that's 2027 to 28. All right, and then 2028 to 29 is so far out at this point. It is just the standard calendar. So we wanted everyone to see this, to have an idea of what this year might look like, but to acknowledge that the the state testing calendar is not available yet. And certainly, as we talk about bigger projects in our district, including our middle school project, we just want everyone to remain flexible on what this year might look like, but to give you a sense, certainly, of what the the year might look like if we built it based off of the the standard AG alone. I'm happy to answer any questions anyone has about these calendars. But again, 2026 to 27 is up for a vote in January, and then twenty seven to 28 and 28 to 29 would be up much further down the line.
Ms. Leroy, it's Mr. on the online. The only the only thought I have about the 28, 29 school year, and again, as you said, we're looking way in advance here, is that the the having the last day of school being a half day falling on that Monday, Monday, the June 11th, to me seems like we will see not many students for that last day of school for a half day on a Monday.
Absolutely. And the calendar committee did have some conversations about exactly what you are saying. And I think as the calendar committee continues to meet in the future, it's something that we'll talk about if we have any flexibility or options to to make the make that end date as impactful as possible. Thank you. Captain Howrung.
Did you give a NIU starting date for August 24 for 2026?
That is our under our understanding of their their current plan.
Okay, I don't think that's the current plan, but I could be wrong, but I think that would be worth checking again.
Okay.
Because of our new Great Valley campus for the learning center there, it's, we expect, we hope not, but we we expect delays. They seem to be almost inevitable when you're opening a new building. So we're planning for that. We're on or ahead of schedule now, but my understanding is that we're gonna start after Labor Day for that reason, just in case we have issues from anything from elevators to permits.
Sure.
So I think we're going to start this next school school year, which is when that facility opens after Labor Day.
Great, Dr. Hoffman. You've been a part of those conversations.
No, I think that's it's great, but it's, you know, things change quickly, right? So when when people are looking at their start times and start dates, I appreciate that information. That's something we'll check and follow up on because either way, we want to make sure if if, you know, when the when the IU is starting, because it impacts, you know, a significant number of our kids, whether it's through different kinds of programming. So we want to, we want to definitely be understanding of what we need to do as a district, depending on when the the IU decides to start. So it's always been a goal, I think, of of our county to try to start at the same time. It just doesn't ever seem to come to fruition despite everyone's best efforts. So there's so many different things going on, as as Mr. Howling mentioned, the construction in one place may force a start time that's different than when someone else is starting in another district. It's just hard to logistically pull them all together, but we will double check with them what they're thinking, because that will help us with our planning, regardless of what our start date winds up being.
Thank you, Captain Howrung. And if we could just pull up the report, there's just a couple of other updates that we have on goal work. So jumping right in, progress continues on our communications program review. The IU last month conducted ideals conversations in partnership with our board members, many of you and our administrators. And the purpose of these conversations really was to identify what we thought it was most important for our community to know about our district. And ultimately, what what attitudes, behaviors and outcomes we might expect to come as a result of communication and community relations. Those are included in tonight's report. And for the sake of time, I won't, I won't go into those in detail, but I I think I hope, as you review them, that you will find them all very aligned with our our core values as a district. I'm really proud of where these ideals sat and the conversations that we had, in particular with our with our board and cabinet members about how we want our community to operate. So that's really hopeful. And we did. So that's really hopeful, um, and we did, uh, last week, we had a focus group with uh, staff members, I think we had a little over fifteen staff members attend. Thank you. Um, here I am just talking, okay. Um, we had fif- about fifteen staff members attend, um, and then tomorrow and Thursday, we have our remaining focus groups for parents and guardians and community members. Um, following that in December, there will be a round of surveys to all of those target audiences, so um, those members of the community that have been reaching out to me to share their regrets. Um, for not attending focus groups, I have been reminding um, that they can uh, participate still as a part of a survey. So that will um, occur in January, I'm sorry, in December, and then in January, we will have material review, data analysis, and ultimately we'll bring. Um, all this back to you for our final report um, in February. So you can see here, um, whoa, I'm going the wrong way. I think. All right, um, so you can see here some of these communications ideals. And then um, a quick update on our Year of Gratitude, Dr. Hoffman, thank you for taking it off at the big, the beginning of our meeting, um. As you said, uh, we are really seeing um, everyone in our community embrace the, the theme, um, but it's not a theme, right? It's, it's a way of being, of being grateful. Um, and so our leaders are really model- modeling that gratitude, we have dedicated time built into our calendars to express our gratitude so that it remains forefront of mind throughout the year. Um, we are doing bimonthly service, and then our community is passing it on by sharing those pins. Um, we are sponsoring community programming like the Great Trunk Retreat that happened last month. Uh, we had to include this photo of a, a child who I believe is like euphoric with a, a lollipop. This is exactly the way I remember Halloween as a kid. So good, um, and then we're planning special communication, so you can look out for some more coming from us in um, in time for the Thanksgiving holiday. Um, and supporting school efforts wherever we can, we really are um, especially proud that this feels like a grassroots effort. Um, that, that we're honoring and celebrating every individual member of our community who is taking the time to show gratitude. Um, for, for those that they know, so I'm proud of that work. And then finally, all of you um, tonight, board members should have received a, a draft of the uh, new superintendent's newsletter, which we hope to hit mailboxes. Um, sometime very soon, there are a couple of final adjustments that we want to make, but looking forward to getting that out to our community with um. A, a letter from Dr. Hoffman, um, and also some uh, some news on the latest and greatest from our district and our schools. So with that, um, I'll pass it back to you, Ms. Loomis.
Excellent report, thank you. That concludes communications, back to you, Dr. Barata.
Thank you, Ms. Loomis, uh, moving on to student activities with Ms. Talbert. Thank you, I'll invite Mr. Clark up to lead us through the student activities agenda.
Good evening again, everyone. So student activities, uh, just in way of, of a, a few announcements at the beginning, big day tomorrow. Two teams have a chance to qualify to go to state championship games, uh, volleyball and field hockey. I have a list of events to share with you later on, but in the spirit of being an ex-coach and not wanting to jinx anything, I did not list those items ahead of time. But they, they are, uh, teams are ready to go. Um, as an addendum to Dr. Hoffman's initial story, our band apps actually scored their highest performance score of the year. That morning, so just so that you're aware that it was kind of a win all the way around. Um, as this person was the opening solo in the band performance, F Y I. Um, so I just wanted to, to make sure that it was a great, it was a great, it was a great day. Um, all around, but these kinds of things happen all of the time in our district, so that's, that's the best part of this department, is I get. A chance to be a part of all the positive things that uh, our students and our coaches and our directors and our performers um, experience. So, I have two items that will be voting items, uh, the first is a ski trip. Uh, the ski trip to Vermont, if we could just bring that one slide up, please. This trip has been done before, but there were some changes and we thought it would be worthwhile just to bring it to the board again, it's a two-night trip. Um, it's been running the last several years, the five hundred and forty per student, that's student cost. Um, and then students are also responsible for their meals. There is a cost associated with it as the overnight stipend um, is a part of it, so to be transparent with what the cost is to the district. Uh, it's a two-night stipend for seven chaperones, and that money is budgeted within our salary budget for overnight stipends. So that would be an item that would uh, come up for voting next week. Questions? Thank you, on to the, the next item. The next item I believe you have in front of you, because it contains some uh, I think it's on the miss administrative side, uh, the presentation, so it's indoor color guard. Who has an overnight trip in February. It's a one-day trip to Corning, New York, which I understand is up above Williamsport, it's about four hours or so as a drive. It fulfills, uh, our, our indoor color guard has to do two regional competitions to qualify for national championships. Um, it gives our, our students uh, exposure to uh, some nationally ranked programs and nationally recognized judges. Uh, it, it bec- it is one day, but because our um, guard. Coaches will be driving, uh, they're going to get up early on Saturday morning, drive to New York, do a performance. Then the kids have to eat and whatnot, and, and they just don't feel like it's, they're going to jump back in vans and drive four hours back to Pennsylvania. Um, so in terms of costs for that trip, it'll be fourteen performers, two or three chaperones, they'll depart. Uh, on Saturday morning, um, they'll stay at the Hampton Inn up there. The uh, the parents group, the boosters, they will pay for the meals and they will pay for the hotel. In terms of costs for the district, um, six hundred dollars for van rentals, which is included in our transportation budget, Marco has that money. Um, three hundred and forty-five dollars was the registration fee for that event, which was coming out of the U H S budget and is covered. And then the two coaches with one night of overnight stipend is a total of five hundred dollars. So it does cost us about fourteen hundred and change for that trip, but all that money comes from areas that are budgeted for this school year. Any questions? And then the final piece of information are upcoming events, if we could, if we could open that up. There's, there is a lot going on, and Wednesday is the first athletic signing day, we hold some signing days throughout the year, students will be going on and participating in college athletics. This weekend, uh, Frankenstein, you can catch your performance on Friday night at seven or on Saturday at one and seven. Um, it's incredible, but when you look at things that are coming up, we're already talking about holiday uh, winter concerts across all of our schools. So from the fourth to the eighteenth, there is, there are a, a large number of concerts, middle school. Multiple concert, high school multiple concerts, elementary school concerts. Um, so, so we're getting close to that time of year. December ninth will open uh, elementary activities registration for the winter session, and those will begin on January 12th. And that concludes my report with the hope that we will be busy on Saturday with at least one team and hopefully. Two teams at uh, Cumberland Valley High School, so.
I just want to say, I really appreciate you giving that all-in cost to the district, I mean, sometimes there are costs that are sort of hidden to the school. You know, not intentionally, but just we don't, we don't really understand it, so that, that's really um, helpful for me, so thank you for sharing that.
Thank you.
Any questions for my colleagues? Mr. Clark, it looks like there's none, thank you for the report. Dr. Barata, that concludes student activities. Excellent, moving on to safe schools with Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Dr. Barata, I'd like to invite Dr. Hoffman to present the November Safe Schools Report.
Thank you, Mr. Allen, that's uh, we're like a tag team today, which is great. Um, so, Safe Schools Report for November, uh, if we go to the next slide, I just want to highlight a few things. Um, some of these are familiar from upcoming events from our last presentation, but just wanted to highlight a few things since our meeting. Um, we did have the opportunity to attend Understanding the Jewish Identity and Experience, so a group of us went. Uh, including Mrs. Talbert, so thank you for, for coming with us that day, you for driving. Um, and uh, that was great. Um, and uh, we just, it was just a great day of learning and then trying to get a better understanding overall of, of how to support all of our students. Um, and what their experiences may be like, and how to, how can we best as a school district? Um, you know, be the best school district we can be for all of our students, uh, in short, it was just a really great day of learning. Um, we also had our first Student Code of Conduct uh, Committee Meeting, which I think was fantastic. Uh, I heard the presenter of the information uh, that day was really great. Um. So for a little more laughter there, that's okay, that was me, by the way, um, the uh, no. But uh, no, actually, it was, it was a great meeting, I think that we had some really good, honest conversations about the history. Mr. Helloran, thank you for, for sharing a lot of the information about the history of, of where we've come, the, the difference between having a discipline policy. And, and regulation, which is one of the huge changes that we made when we made the adjustment. But a lot of the conversation centered around looking at, you know, understanding what we currently have. Uh, also thinking about and looking at best practices, uh, and what they, what, what, what does research say is best practice and. And um, we'll say retraining or, or discipline when it comes to um, you know, K-12 schools. And then just looking at the congruencies and or incongruencies between A G and policy that we have. Um, and talking about norming and the importance of norming, because when you have flexibility in a, in a discipline policy. Uh, practice, sorry, policy is what we've moved from. Uh, when your practices are flexible, it creates sometimes really great uh, opportunities for, for learning and handling things appropriately. Uh, but it also challenges consistency in a, at, at times, right? And so um, norming is really important when it comes to like, how would you handle certain situations and norming that across. Our districts, right, so there's a lot of discussion around norming and how important that is. Uh, we also had a team uh, visiting, uh, going to the Enhanced School Safety Summit. Uh, that focused on behavior threat assessment and I, on the same day in October. Uh, so it was a busy day for uh, for uh, safe schools. So if we go to the next slide, some upcoming events, and I included a couple of December pieces here, just because. Uh, our, our next uh, report will be in January. But our pay survey, survey administration um, date here, it's an important survey for us to understand our kids and what they're telling us when it comes to. Uh, behaviors and such that we can look at and plan for. Our Safe Schools Steering Committee will meet in November, uh, Personal Electronic Devices Meeting Two. Uh, will be happening in November, our second Student Code of Conduct Meeting will be happening December 2nd. And then we have some transitions um, in sharing our District Achievement Report and thinking about that, we do track. Metrics other than academic achievement in our report, so we'll look at things like Safe to Save Reports, Threat Assessments and Screening and such, so. It's actually a really important part of safe schools that we, that we share this information, also not. Aware of many districts that did share this information as a part of all the information um, that people share about their district, so I, I'm actually very proud of our district that we share. All of our information and we use all that information to help plan the student experience. Uh, and then obviously we have a, a transition uh, coming up here in December and talking about our Safe Schools work uh, with our new folks. Um, at uh, our board retreat, and so they're up to speed on what it is that, that committee's about, uh, what does Safe Schools uh, report about and. Um, so that they're caught up to speed on some of the work that we're planning uh, this year and, you know, in future years and things that we're thinking, so. Uh, if you go to the next slide, this is just our timeline, uh, so you can see where we are, we're tracking very well. Um, and the only reason the personal electronic device isn't green yet is because we haven't had the meeting yet in November, so. Uh, things are tracking well there, and if you go to the final slide. Just as a recap, I, I sort of recapped the, the bottom piece, but our Personal Electronic Device Task Force Meeting, uh, Mr. Ottavard led that, he did a fantastic job. Um, this was everything I hoped it would be when it comes to a task force meeting. Uh, the idea of how are we enforcing this policy, the policy is words on paper. But it's really good to get feedback on how that's going, and how are we enforcing, how is that going? So that meeting, we discussed our current state of the policy implementation at all three levels. From all the different perspectives that were in the room, which was students, which was parents, which was administrators, which was teachers, um, board members. And um, really positive feedback in general and overall about the state of personal electronic devices and how things are going. Um, and then, you know, brainstorm some ways to start to address some of the challenges and pain points, there are a few that were brought up. Um, you know, some of our kids are still negotiating a little bit, I think the word negotiating was brought up earlier. Um, you know, how does that look in a study hall, for example, versus a, a regular class at, at the high school level? Um, I, and also uh, some discussion around potentially. How our parents are doing it differently depending on what the age of their kids and um, the age of the parents. Um, and what they were, what they've been brought up um, with and what they're choosing for their children at a younger age versus. You know, maybe students and parents that lived through um, the pandemic where. The personal electronic device became so much a part and intertwined with their lives, right? So really interesting conversations are happening. Um, I would say that the current implementation of our policy that, that we changed this past year is going very well. By all accounts, by, from all measures of the folks that we talked to, but you know, it's not perfect, uh, still, right? And we're still going to continue to work on um, you know, uh, how we can continue to get better. And if you remember, the, the key piece to this was, wasn't about the words necessarily, it wasn't about. You know, getting people to agree uh, or change their position, it was about coming to a common position. Which was that our district should be a place where no student needs to have. A cellphone or a personal electronic device to access everything that we offer and to be full participant in everything that we offer. And that still is the, is the main mantra, and that is still what the task force is thinking about. And so that's where a lot of the work is coming from, how do we get to that aspirational goal, right? What are the areas that we still need to look at and address? And even one little thing came up about our, our student pictures, and Picture Day. There was a Q R code that, that, that the picture company had that you needed to scan in order to. Um, to access the, the next level of, of your registration and um. We heard about that aspect of things and said, you know what, you're right, we should have an alternative. Also speaks to why it's so important to continue to have a cash option when it comes to, you know, coming to any of our events after school. Uh, so it doesn't have to be, you know, hometown ticketing, Q R code. Um, that you can still pay cash, right? So those are the things that people recognize about our district that we need to continue to think about when we make changes, so. Um, questions, comments, concerns?
I'd like to hear from our student representatives on how things are going with the cellphone policy, do you notice changes, good things, concerns?
I think that talking about study halls in particular, sorry for my voice, by the way, I'm getting over a cold, it's November. Um, is all I'm gonna say, um. But yes, talking about phones in study hall, particularly at the high school level, has been something that. It's been very contentious, especially from the student perspective, because um. There has been an effort to kind of push productive study halls, um, but a lot of students believe that, well. Having my phone is key to my productivity because um. And that's a lot of the feedback I've heard when I have asked um, students about what they believe. Is the root with this, should students be able to have their phones during study hall, because I mean, in my study hall, I have to put it in the phone pocket. Um, I know of other study halls that you don't have to put it in the pocket, you have to put it in your backpack, but you can listen to music, there's like. All of these different like nuances depending on who you have for a study hall. Um, but I think like the main goal of trying to keep a study hall productive is working. Um, but there has been pushback, there's more pushback at the beginning of the year, I think that. Um, as we transition to the second marking period, there has been less from students, have you heard anything different?
Yeah, I agree with that, and I think that um, everyone has been adjusting in. I, I didn't think that students would adjust how they have been, and I've actually heard that a lot of students have been enjoying having less access to phones during the school day. Um, whether it be productivity socially, um, and I think that's really cool to hear, and I just think that. It speaks to um, the effectiveness of what we've been doing with the policy and working to make that experience available to everyone, so. I think it has been working well, there might be some small things to work out, especially with study halls, the cushions that I've heard. Um, people want to listen to music in study halls, one of the big things, but I think overall it is going really well.
Where I'm so proud of our students is they, you know, regardless of where we are with study hall or not and having discussions. I mean, they're, they're good discussions. So there's, and, but the idea, like the, the reason why. That we're looking at having restrictions, um, I feel like there's a good common ground that everybody kind of gets it like. Yeah, there are times that, that's good to be on it and times that, that it needs to go away, right? And, um, I've really appreciated that about the students. Um, they've been incredibly, uh, so, you know, supportive and compliant, but they're also, you know, at times pushing back in ways saying, well, I don't understand this aspect of it. So can we talk about that? Um, gosh, that's, I feel like that's that, uh, fortunate graduate right there, right? So, um, just wanted, I just wanted to make sure that you guys got your due for, um, you know, you guys have been a great partner. It, it takes good partners to do this kind of stuff. Um, lunch and learn is another example of why students and administration need to have good partnerships. Um, so I think this is just another example of that. And thanks for, thanks for sticking with us. And with that, Mr. Allen, back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Hoffman. Any other questions or comments about the safe schools report? Seeing on Dr. Brana, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. We're going to move on to finance with Mr. Schartz.
And I will now ask, uh, Mr. Dady to report, uh, for finance for this month.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. So we have one voting item this month and three update, three informational items. Uh, the voting item should be really quick. It's a resolution from PDE to approve Dr. Hoffman's electronic signature on contracts, agreements and grants with, uh, PDE. Uh, the most important piece is the grants. Uh, Dr. Hoffman signs all of our grants with PDE and this will allow him to do it electronically. It's a, I would like to say it's a routine item, but obviously we have not had a superintendent change in a while, so it's not routine for UNIVIL. There's no questions. I'll move on to 11.2. So 11.2 is, uh, the presentation of our preliminary audited financial results. If you just bring up that attachment. So the first column there shows the budget, 105.8 million in revenue, 105.8 million in expenses. We did have a budgeted deficit of $26,000. Uh, the right-hand column is the preliminary audited results. Uh, it's preliminary until we get the official final report, which will come sometime, uh, between now and the holidays. Uh, but we did see revenues of 105.1 million, slightly under. Uh, a lot of that was due to the decrease in overall assessments, uh, which resulted in our real estate revenue tax being down a little bit. Uh, and then on the expenditure side, we were at 105.9 million, slightly over budget, resulted in a $807,000 use of fund balance. Uh, this is the fifth year in a row since 2020, 2021 that we've had a deficit. That really has been driven over those five years by our healthcare costs. So since the 2020, 2021 school year, our healthcare costs have gone up 65% in total, which is average about 12% a year. The decade prior to that, we saw over the whole decade, a 20% total increase in healthcare, 2% a year. Why that's happening, it, it really is, some of it is just inflation on costs, the cost of healthcare going up. Uh, our number of claims have gone up, our number of really high claims has really gone up in the past five years. We're analyzing with Raskini, uh, all of our options on healthcare, how we could, um, how we could fund our healthcare. And how we can fund our healthcare overages each year. So we'll have more to report back to the board on that. Uh, in the coming months as we work towards the 26, 27 budget. Uh, one thing to highlight here, our board policy does say our unassigned fund balance should be 5% between 5 and 8%. The 8% is governed by PDE. We can go no higher than 8% in unassigned fund balance. The 5% is a UCF, uh, guideline that we implemented within our own policy. This does us, does get us down below 5%. We have a couple of options. We could change the board policy. Or we could shift some of the funds out of assigned fund balance. Assigned fund balance does not actually take a formal board action. That was just assigned at one point because most likely we were over 8% in unassigned fund balance. So we had to assign it to something. That 1.49 million that we have assigned right now is assigned to employee severances or employee, um, compensated absences. What that basically is, is employees who are still currently employed, not employees who have already retired. Employees who are currently employed, we have to, uh, we do a calculation each year that calculates what they would be owed if they retired. So if all of our employees retired today, it would be that amount, uh, that we would pay out in, in severance and, uh, compensated absences. The amount for people that have already retired is included in our expenditure budget. So again, this is everybody who's still employed and will be employed going forward. We can theoretically, not every district has that assigned fund balance, some districts do, some districts don't. So we can move, it would be about 800,000 that we'd have to move from that assigned fund balance to unassigned fund balance. Uh, to get above the 5% to be in line with board policy. Obviously with five years of a deficit, uh, this is now a, uh, extremely important initiative that we're, uh, a focus of our budgeting as we move forward. Uh, we know and administration is committed to, uh, flipping that deficit, deficit over to a surplus. And, uh, building the fund balance up over time, uh, so that we get within those comfortable levels that PDE guidelines in our district policy. You know, set between that five and eight percent. The auditor will be out. Uh, we're targeting the February meeting to do the formal. They always come out either January, February to do the formal presentation to the board, uh, where they discuss the, uh, audit in depth with the board. So they'll come out most likely in February. So although it doesn't take official approval, um. Basically we can move that assigned fund balance over if, uh, everybody is in agreement with that. That way we would remain in, uh, compliance with our board policy for this year. That has been done in the past. Really, we've moved both ways to stay within that board policy limit.
So Mr. Mr. Dady, so I know you just reiterated that, that this, it does not, moving from the assigned, the assigned fund balance does not require a board vote. So, and I know it sounds like you just asked us what we think, but ultimately whose decision is that?
Yeah, it's really administration's decision. But in the past, we've asked the board, uh, for guidance on assigned fund balance levels.
I, I guess I'm, I'm in support of making that change this year, but I think the bigger issue is that we just need to be replenishing. I know that healthcare is, has been a major cost, special education has been a major cost. We took a 0% increase for our community during COVID. Um, so I mean, there, there are multiple factors, but in the past, my understanding is it's kind of ebbed and flowed in terms of like healthcare costs. And one year they're up, that one year they're down, and we've just seen this consistent rise. So I think we can't, um, we can't wait until we see a reversal of costs. I think we need to be more proactive about it, but in terms of how to address it this year, um, I'm personally comfortable with that.
Yeah, I, I would say, you know, from a recommendation standpoint, I, I would recommend we not change our policy, but we, but we make this adjustment. Um, and then be committed to, um, reversing the trend.
Yeah, it's really the board's policy to, you know, stay within that five to eight percent. So we could do that by moving the assigned fund balance.
I, I agree with, with Dr. Broad and, and, and with, with Dr. Hoffman's recommendation that I'd, I'd think it's a bad idea to, to change policy, you know, willy-nilly. Just in order to, in order to meet the, you know, the current financial situation. But I, I do think it would be prudent for us at, at this time to, to move money from the assigned to the unassigned fund balance. But I'd, I'm, I would be very cautious about adapting policies, you know, for temporary conditions.
Mr. Dady, um, we've discussed this a few times now. This is not a new topic, but as inflation happens every year. This fund balance also has to go up if you're going to maintain that 5%. So instead of saying at the end of the year, here's the deficit or here's the, the positive, and now let's modify. Could we like not make it our protocol that we always budget to continue to put money into the, um, unassigned fund balance? At the same level as the inflation.
Yes, that would, that will be a focus of the budget for the next couple of years to build up the unassigned fund balance.
Yeah, because I think waiting for us to see a deficit or a positive and then filling it back in is not a good strategy probably at the end of the day.
Yeah. And if you think about the last five years, so that started with the 0% tax increase in 2020, 2021 school year. That was the first year that we saw a 20% plus healthcare increase. Uh, and that was the first year, one of the first years we actually had a budgeted deficit. So we've had five budget, budgeted deficits in a row. We've had five double-digit increases in healthcare in a row.
Last few years have been extremely abnormal for multiple reasons. COVID was one. But then the whole housing thing and just the inflationary pressures that we were feeling, you know, they started in 2009. We felt it now, but we felt it and everybody felt it. So this is not a, uh, this is, this is absolutely unusual. That's not how it's supposed to be. I'm hoping it's gonna get back on track, but yes, this is not to fault anything we've been doing. It really is to just manage our future a little bit differently.
So we'll move that assigned fund balance and get that built into the audit report and then that will be presented in February to the board.
Mr. Dady, could I jump in here?
Sure.
Um, two questions from me. One is, uh, if we do the transfer from the assigned to the unassigned. We're, as I understand it, the way you've described it, we are effectively over-reserved in that assigned fund balance for the exposure that we have. But I want to, I want to ask that question directly and make sure that this is an actuarially sound, uh, movement of funds. That's not going to leave, that we're not robbing Peter to pay Paul here and fill in a hole and creating a different one at some point in the near future. Um, so that's question number one. Question number two. Uh, you know, the consistency of the deficits over the last few years, and I recognize that there have been some, um, some anomalies in there. But, but clearly we want as a board to have. Um, variability that's more around zero, uh, closer to the budget overall, so that we're not consistently erring, um, to the deficit side. That may speak to some changes that we have to make in terms of our budgeting process or, or, uh, discipline around enforcing budgets, et cetera. So I wondered if either you or Dr. Hoffman could just give some preliminary thoughts about what we can do differently here. Um, to, to make this kind of a, a problem that at, at least, um, decreases in magnitude. And, and hopefully decreases in frequency in the years to come.
So to answer your first question, this, uh. So this is the portion of the compensated absences that will be considered long-term. The short-term, the, the people who already retired, the people who are going to retire in the next year or two. We track that separately. We expense that every year and we expense the next year or two out, um, each year. So I don't see this as a problem. This really was a assignment that was made to keep us below that 8% threshold at some time. And then it's just carried forward, um, really probably over the past 10 years. It's, we've had this assigned fund balance. Uh, I don't think it's a, um, I don't think we're running into any issues moving that. Uh, overall, our fund balance has to increase. So that's really the issue. Uh, on the second, I'll at least start and then I'll pass it over to Dr. Hoffman. A, a lot of the variability has been, uh, especially in healthcare, which we're self-funded. We take on all, all of our own risk. That's where we're looking at options, uh, for some of that risk, risk sharing. That would take away some of our risk on an annual basis. Uh, that's really been a problem with the budgets the past five years, because we've just seen incredibly, uh. The increases are not sustainable. We're increasing over 12% a year on average for five years. So, uh, that's just not sustainable under budgeting under Act One.
Yeah.
Yeah. And a couple of other things, um, Mr. Schartz too, when they're talking about operating expenses, right? I think Mr. Dady's first point is a, is an important one when it comes to how we're funding healthcare. What are the option, what, what options are out there? There are other, other options that for us to explore, and I think that would be prudent to do. Uh, I also think when you're thinking about budgets, um, you know, significant part of our budget is, um, kind of staffing. Um, so, you know, with our, um, overall enrollment declining, I think it's a good opportunity for us to take a look at positions. Uh, what's, uh, what may be coming down the pike, uh, as far as, you know, opportunities to what I might call right size. Um, you know, depending on the numbers. So that's something that, uh, we will be exploring and taking a look at, um. You know, how does, how does the kind of the future of our enrollment impact, you know, some things we might do in the future? And additionally, just, just, uh, looking at our budgeting practices operationally, uh, in our day-to-day, uh, taking a look at, um. You know, our, our process and making sure that our process is, is aligned, um, that we are consistent with, with our process. And, yeah, quite honestly, uh, we are a district that loves to move the needle because it's, it's what we do. Um, but we also have to keep in mind and hopefully the board and the community heard tonight in a lot of our presentations. Whether it was a curriculum or was it, whether it was through the other process that our directors were giving a lot of information about. You know, where, uh, the funding is coming from, from the, uh, opportunities that were being presented, whether or not that was budgeted. Uh, previously or it can be, can be absorbed in our budget by not doing something else. So I think that's going to be a change in practice for us to make sure that the things that we're moving forward are things that we've budgeted. Or, uh, that we are able to say that we can, uh, we can move the needle and do these things. But, uh, being able to articulate what we might not be doing, um, as a result, to make sure that we control our day-to-day operational costs.
If there's no other comments or questions, I'll move on to 11.3 is just a update on the PA state budget. If we could just bring up that presentation. So as of, uh, November 10th today, there's still no PA state budget. So we're 133 days late. Uh, on a positive note, PSBA, the Pennsylvania School Boards Association and PASBO, the Pennsylvania Association of School Business Officials have reported that. Uh, leaders from both parties continue to meet with Governor Shapiro and they feel like there's progress being made in the past two weeks. Uh, from an education standpoint, they're really the two issues, uh, biggest issues are the funding level for education and, um, cyber charter school reform. Just a reminder of, I think I covered this last year during the budget process, but the longest budget impasse, um, that we've seen is the 2015, 16 state budget. It was partially approved. Uh, I think it was actually New Year's Eve, December 31st, 2015. The full budget wasn't approved until the end of March in 2016. Uh, but because of that partial improvement, we actually started to receive money in the beginning of February, about five weeks after the partial approval in December. So that's the longest that I have on record that we actually received our first payment for state and federal revenue was that February 2016 date. We go to the next slide. Um, so, oh, back one. So the, just, uh, PASBO did send out an update on November 6th, so last, uh, Wednesday, Thursday. Uh, they're right from their update, we think that good progress is being made. Uh, the House and Senate are scheduled to actually come in to, for a voting session, November 17th and 19th, uh, next Monday through Wednesday. Uh, the five key takeaways, the, the biggest one really being that as of last week, they still hadn't agreed on a final appropriation number, which obviously is a big step in the budgeting process. Uh, everybody feels like getting the elections behind us is a positive step. They've seen significant, um, progress. Uh, once Tuesday passed, once the elections were done. The, the five, five-party meetings between the governor and the leaders of the House and Senate, uh, have really remained steady since Monday, the 27th. From a school code, uh, from a, uh, education budget, that's actually in a good spot. There's only those two issues. It's the other stuff that is, uh, running into, um. making them run into issues, especially around some transportation issues. Uh, and they really are facing internal pressure because of staff payroll, because without a state, without a state budget, some of their staff are not getting paid. So they're getting pressure from internal staff to get something done. Uh, they did. PASBO put out three timelines last week, and this is the one that I only highlighted one because they think this is the most realistic. And basically what it is, is the last week and this week, the uh staff of the senators and um representatives will continue to work on all the code bills. They would come back, legislators come back on the, on the seventeenth. Uh, and they actually believe that there could be some progress made next week uh with a, a final budget approved before Thanksgiving. Again, that's just speculation on PASBO's uh side, so we'll see what actually happens. From a UCF budget uh impact, this is our state revenue. Uh, we get twenty point five million, so nineteen percent of our twenty-five, twenty-six revenue budget comes from the state. Uh, these numbers are mainly from the governor's proposal in February. Uh, they're not quite as high as the governor's proposal, but it is a slight increase over what we received in twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, we truly don't know what those numbers will be, but these should be close. Uh, on the right hand side, the revenue not frozen. Uh, so some state money is actually flowing that's in our budget. The two point five million in property tax reduction is the gambling funds. That's a direct pass through uh on the homestead reduction on the tax bills. So we've received those funds. Uh, we've also received some of our safety and security grants, specifically two hundred and six thousand that we have budgeted for this year. We should receive whether there's a state budget or not because they're from prior state budgets. There are twenty-four, twenty-five state grants that we allocated to this uh, this budget for our school year. It's a two-year grant period from the state. Uh, so they're already fully appropriated. Uh, on the, also as part of the state budget impasse, our federal revenue is, is frozen because federal revenue flows through the state and then comes to us. So they can't send this to us without a state budget, even though this is fully appropriated from the federal government and is sitting with PVE right now. Uh, so this amount accounts for one point two million, one point one percent of our general fund budget. Again, a piece of this is, is still flowing in access funds, so about four hundred and fifty thousand. We don't receive the access funds until the end of the school year. We have to file for reimbursement of expenses that already happened. So although we have four hundred and fifty thousand budgeted and it will flow, we actually won't receive it until next September for this school year. If somebody's looking at this and it's really a eagle-eyed accountant, the six hundred and five thousand in IDEA funds is not it's federal revenue, but it's actually shown in all of our financial records as local revenue because it flows through federal government to the state, to the IU, and because of that, we have to classify it as local revenue, but technically it is a federal grant. Uh, so just thinking about what money is actually frozen. There's ten point four million between state and federal funds that are fully frozen and we will not get without a, a approved budget. I did pull out the retirement subsidy, so again, we pay this year thirty-four percent of our wages, we pay as a PESER subsidy. Seventeen percent of that, so half of it is the district's responsibility, seventeen percent is the state's responsibility. We have to pay the full amount and then we get reimbursed the state's half after we pay it. As part of this budget impasse, this PESERS is only making us send our seventeen percent. So although our revenue was short by eight point two million, our expenditures are reduced by eight point two million until uh they have an approved budget. So really that's a, a wash on our expenditure and revenue side. So because of the budget impasse, we're really missing out on ten percent of our revenue. Uh, so what is the impact and what is the plan moving forward? So based on our analysis, we really will have we won't have cash flow issues until late April or May. Uh, without that ten percent, we really can't get through the full year, especially given the prior presentation that our fund balance is down to uh under seven percent in total. The other thing that comes from this is as of October thirty first, we should have received about four point five million in state revenue, and if we had that money, we would have, we don't need it for cash flow right now, so we could have invested it. So at a very minimum we're out forty thousand dollars as of October thirty first in interest income. Uh, and that's a conservative estimate that's based on the lowest interest rate that we could have gotten each month. Uh, so it's most likely slightly more than that. Uh, if we talk about a path going forward, we will have an updated presentation if there's not a budget approved by January, because by then we'll be within three months of when we would have cash flow issues. Uh, so we'll have some recommendations on how we would handle, uh, you know, if a budget doesn't get approved by April. Just two of those things that are available to us. There is a revenue anticipation loan. Other districts in the IU have already uh no, no other districts of Chester County, but other districts in the state and a lot of IUs have taken out revenue anticipation loans this year. Uh, we wouldn't have to do that until April, but that's a possibility. Uh, one one loan or program with PDE that districts have already utilized and it would be available to us is a debt service payment loan. So PDE will loan money to a district for their debt service payments and it's an interest-free loan. We wouldn't really need it until June, but we do have an eight point four million dollar debt service payment due June first. So that's a really strong um solution. If, if we go to June without a state budget, then we have really big issues, but if we did, that's a program that's available to us, that will be a significant help. Uh, so in addition to the state budget impasse, the uh federal government has also been shut down since October first. They're really there's not much impact to UCFSB for twenty-five, twenty-six. All of the federal grants that we have budgeted for twenty-five, twenty-six are allocated, they're sent to the state, they're just sitting there and waiting for the state to pass a budget so that we can receive those funds. The one area that we could be impacted would be the National School Lunch Program. Right now, we're only guaranteed those funds through November until the uh, so we'll receive November's claims in December for our National School Lunch Program claim. Uh, that's all that they've so far committed to. They are going month by month, like they they were committed through September thirtieth because that was when the shutdown occurred. Then they committed to October and now they just recommitted to November, so they're kind of slowly committing each month as we go. But the potential impact from the federal government shutdown would, wouldn't occur for us until twenty-six, twenty-seven. Uh, like I showed earlier, we received just over a million dollars in total federal funds. So we would really, if, if there was any reduction or elimination of those funds, we would have to figure out how we would fund the expenditures that we do fund with those currently within the general fund. Uh, just a reminder of what we do fund with federal fund. So uh Title One, we do fund a staff position, a reading specialist at UE. Title Two is really professional development work for our teachers and professional staff. That should be Title Three. It says Title Two, but the third one down is Title Three. That's our uh English language learners services and resources for those students. Title Four is our college and career readiness, um NAVIONS program. And then IDEA and Access, this is our special ed federal grants and these fund a whole bunch of staff positions throughout the district. Uh, so again, it is really key that we continue to receive these federal funds and if we were to lose any bit of them, it's a, it's an important decision to uh determine how we would continue to fund these extremely important programs. Think that's all that I have for the state uh budget. I did put this together la- last week and there's already been significant project, progress in the past two, two or three days, so I'm hoping that we don't have to have a presentation in January and we'll have a state budget, but if we don't, we'll be ready to uh present to the board what our options are for moving forward.
I appreciate you pulling this together. I so if I understood you correctly, the federal funds are sitting, some of the federal funds are sitting with the state. We are not earning interest on money that we would have typically received by now. Is the state earning money on what is sitting with them currently and what hasn't been allocated to school districts?
I would assume so, yes. Yeah, so they have all of the Title One, Title Two, Title Three, Title Four, IDEA. The only money that's flowing is the access funds.
And I, I kind of am asking this tongue in cheek, but kind of not. Um, the state has said we only have to pay half of the PESERS?
Yes.
So nice of them. Um, what if we didn't pay that? Like what, what is our, what is our risk that we hold on to that until the funds start flowing to us?
So we're paying our portion.
Yeah, but what if we didn't pay our portion, I'm saying?
I'm not sure. I, I don't even want to know what would happen.
I mean, they're not paying, right?
There were, there, the state's portion we're holding. Once there's a state budget, we're going to have five days to then send that to the state. And we should immediately get the, their portion back to us. It's, it's literally as simple as we send it to them, they send it back to us as revenue.
Yeah.
Doc, Dr. brought a tip to, to, to the point you, you just raised about us not earning interest on on funds that, you know, that we are that we should have from the state or from federal. Um, there there is, right now, there is no kind of recourse for, for school districts um in, in a case of a, in the case of a uh, you know budget impasse, but there are, there are several pieces, there are, there are currently several pieces of proposed legislation which would be forward-looking to, to, you know, if they were, if they passed would, would, you know, be set up to to in some ways mitigate the situations in the future in terms of either, you know re, having the state reimburse districts for lost, for lost um interest revenue in the case of future budget impasses. But so there's proposed legislation out there which could be helpful in the future if we go through this again, but uh, but nothing that can help us right now at the moment.
I was gonna share just the one thing that I think we should, need to keep our eye on overall, given a lot of the conversation we've had in this particular part of the meeting is uh thinking about the, 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 the federal funds, the title funds and such as we think about next budget year. Right? So I know that, you know, we, we did receive those, those funds through, well, we haven't quite received them yet, but they were allocated and the state has them. Um, but that was because they were already appropriated before decisions were made whether to give those funds or not give those funds. Um, so I don't know what the decision-making will be for the next budget year regarding, you know, any reduction of those funds to school districts or states or whatever it may be. But I do think it's something for us to keep in mind when we think about budgeting, um, that there's some uncertainty, right, that we need to think about. And to me, that's one of the key takeaways, you know, optimistic for a state budget and I'm optimistic that um, you know, that we will uh we will not have to take a lot of the measures that were presented tonight. Um, it is frustrating to not have the investment income uh that we would have otherwise had for sure. Um, but I also think bigger picture, um, thinking about how do we protect against uncertainty, I think, when it comes to thinking about our priorities for for budgeting for, for next year as well. Just keeping that in mind.
Mr. Dady, I, I, I know that you said that from, from a withheld federal funds, that it's not significant for us now, wouldn't really hit us till the twenty-six, twenty-seven year. But in the, in the event that they do not fund the National School Lunch Program going forward, so I know you said November's already been allocated, we'll see that in December. If we still don't have, you know, a, a federal budget passed and, you know, come, come December, what, what, what does that look like for us if they do not fund the school lunches, you know, for, for December, so the money that we'd get in January?
So it is a small amount of our food service budget, the federal funds. We'd be able to get through this full year with the food services fund balance. Uh, and I do think it's not a I thi- I think we'll receive it, it's just a matter of when. The USDA has the funds, it's really just releasing those funds. That's what they've been doing on a month by month basis. So I'm, I don't know that there's significant worry about this year's funds again, even for food service. It's really just we won't receive them similarly to, we aren't receiving the general fund federal revenue. But we do have enough fund balance in food service to get through this year.
Just, just thinking through um how things are changing, um, I think we get funding from Department of Ed and then USDA. Um, I think USDA is a little bit safer bet with the dynamics today. But Department of Fed, that part, I'm having put my arms around it fully, like, what do you anticipate? What are you, what do you think with all this stuff, at least at the federal level? Now, I don't know if that'll trickle down at the state level or not. But as we think long term, where, how should we be thinking about it?
Well, that's a tough one, I think. Overall, I, I think I think just like, I think you treat it like any, any uncertainty, right? So how do you, how do you try to mitigate risk? Right? So I think that's why it was important that Mr. Dady showed the, the impact of, potential impact of certain things. And then, you know, thinking about different ways and mechanisms and levers to, to mitigate risk. Um, you know, and to the extent that, that we can, right? I think, to me, that's the when you're dealing with uncertainty and you don't know, exactly know what the answers are, but mitigating risks to the extent that you can is probably the best position we can put ourselves in. Um, and uh, so that, I don't have a specific answer for you, Dr. Akki, but I do think that you know, just employ, uh, just, you know, putting practices in place that uh will help us mitigate risk, I think, moving forward that and that we know what the potential risks are and that maybe there's some, some ways that we can start to think about that, so that if, if it does come to fruition, if there are worst case scenarios that prepared for those, so.
I mean, this is a big ship and it'll take time to, to turn it. So with that in mind, you know, how do we create a low probability, medium probability, high probability situation? And a listing like that and then, you know, manage risk accordingly would over a period of time. Yeah. Wish we didn't have to talk about it, but it's good to talk about it and I'm glad for the presentation that we at least know, gosh, it's a significant chunk of our budget, so it's good to know that. Thank you for putting it together.
Yeah, and although there is some concern, I don't think there's huge concerns that those programs would go away. So I'll move on to eleven point four. The monthly local revenue analysis. I uh, again, local revenue continues to be on track. I do just want to highlight the second page. The interim taxes, because that's the one that we are low on this year. Uh, we've only collected twenty-six thousand through October. Uh, but really that's based on the billings. We, we just get started with the billings for this year. Uh, I do just want to highlight the billings. Again, interim taxes are really improvements or new buildings that happen uh throughout the year that we then bill because they weren't included in our annual tax bill. So if somebody makes an improvement and that improvement is completed in October, we get an interim notice from the county, whether it's Delaware County or Chester County, and then we issue a partial uh an interim bill for the remainder of that school year and then it's included going forward in the regular tax bill. Uh, last year was a really low year for our total interim bills. I don't know why. I, it's what we get from the county. I don't know if there really was just a dip in the amount of improvements and construction that was occurring or if there was delays in getting the information from the counties. Uh, but we only billed yeah, the next page, if you could just go to the next page. So we only billed two hundred and thirteen thousand in total face uh tax amount last year. Already this year through October, through November, if I include November first bills, we're at two hundred and twenty-one thousand. Typically, we see somewhere between three hundred and fifty and four hundred thousand in bills over this, you know, six-year period that's up there. So last year was really low. That's why the end of last year and the beginning of this year is so low on collections. But since we've already billed two hundred and twenty-one thousand, typically they're paid about two months after we bill them. I fully expect to see this revenue uh pick back up in the coming months and I'm hopeful that, you know, by this time, we're already well past half, halfway of our budget and, and interims billed, so I would anticipate that, you know, we'll continue that uh progress and we should be in a good spot by the end of the year. I'm curious, we have a meeting, a business manager meeting that the count, that the um assessment office will be at this Thursday, so I will ask why last year's interims were so low, because it was really a, an anomaly for us in terms of how how many notifications we got from both counties. Other than that, everything else on the local revenue is in a good spot. Other than that, everything else on the local revenue is in a good spot. If there's no questions, I'll kick it back to Mr. Schwartz if he's still there.
I am here.
The same thing on the interim?
I have, I'll find out this Thursday. I have not asked anybody.
Yeah, other districts, and then the question back to.
Yeah, I'll ask the, we have a representative coming from Chester County. We don't have a representative coming from Delaware County, but we do have from Chester County. I'll ask him.
It's a little fishy. Yeah, I mean, like.
It was significantly lower.
Yeah.
It was 213,000 in total, you know, face calculation of taxes, which is half of what we typically see.
If there are no further questions, I'll hand it back to Dr. Brada.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. We're going to move on to reports and comments, beginning with the legislative report with Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Dr. Brada. In, in light of the budget impasse update that, that Mr. Dady just gave us, I'd like to discuss the potential resolution that Pennsylvania School Boards Association, that PSBA has, has submitted for, for, for all those, all the districts across the Commonwealth to consider, to consider passing a resolution which basically states that, given that we're now 133 days overdue on the state budget and the negative impacts it's having on every district across, across the Commonwealth, it's a, a resolution that politely asks our, our, our state senators and state representatives to work together in a bipartisan fashion to, to pass the state budget as, as soon as, as soon as possible. The, the CCIU, Mr. Hellra, I spoke earlier, the CCIU has a similar resolution which they will likely pass at their, at their next board meeting next week. So I wanted to, wanted to bring this, bring this forward for, for us to, to discuss as a board to see if this is something that we would, that we'd like to do. I know that our, our colleagues in, in most of the other districts in Chester County are all considering this, this resolution at, at their board meetings right now in November as well.
Historically, I'll just say that we're not a district that's fond of passing resolutions. We don't jump into political questions easily. But we do pass resolutions that are apolitical. We do pass resolutions that are really important to our students, to our staff, to our whole educational system. This is certainly one of them. So to me, this is a very urgent, very non-political and something we should certainly pass to try to continue to nudge the legislature to pass their budget.
I agree. I think this is the way we can use our collective voice, just to say this is impacting us and it's certainly impacting some districts even more than us. So just drawing attention.
I would, ideally, no, this is, if, if we decide to, to, to move forward, this would be a voting item at next week's, next Monday's board meeting. Hopefully this, hopefully this resolution will not be necessary. We'll have, it'd be lovely if we have a state budget, you know, at some point over the next week. But, but if that's not the case, I'm, I'm, I'm in support of, of passing this resolution for all the reasons that Mr. Hellra just mentioned.
Me too, Mr. Allen.
Any other thoughts or comments regarding the, the resolution? From my vantage point, seeing none, I will turn this back to you, Dr. Brada.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Next up is community comments. Anyone from the community who'd like to make public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to school director comments, beginning with Mr. Hellra.
No comments.
No comments. None for me.
I would just say I, I too support the resolution that was just discussed. And again, with tomorrow being Veterans Day, express my appreciation for all those veterans here and out in our community, not only for their service, but for the example of service that they have set.
Mr. Allen?
No comments.
No comments.
No comments.
Mr. Schwartz? No comment there. I too have no comments. So that concludes tonight's meeting. Next week's regular board meeting will be held at the Unionville High School Library. And thank you, everyone, for your time and attention.